Approve the $1,000 donation to Citrus Springs Middle School from Phil Royal Legacy. Approve the $1,000 donation to Central Middle School from Phil Royal Legacy. Approve the $500 donation to Citrus High School from Yanis Colwell. Approve the $500 donation to Citrus High School from Florida Education Foundation. Approve the $500 donation to Citrus High School from Rain and Rain. Approve the $500 donation to Citrus High School from Capital Steel. Approve the $500 donation to Citrus High School from Powers Protection. Approve the $500 donation to Citrus High School from Lay of Construction. Approve the $500 donation to Citrus High School from Aqua Marine. Approve the $500 donation to Citrus High School from Quality First Proofing. Approve the $500 donation to Citrus High School from Jake M. Fleming. Approve the $500 donation to Citrus High School from a Good Appraisal Service. Approve the $5,000 donation to LeCantle High School and LeCantle Middle School from the Kings Bay Rotary Charitable Foundation. Approve the $3,292 donation to LeCantle High School from VNN Incorporated Fund Funding Campaign. Approve the $1,000 donation to LeCantle High School from Alex Philpason M.D. Approve the $1,000 donation to Crest School from the Rotary Club Crystal River Foundation. Approve the $1,500 donation to the Academy of Environmental Science from Kings Bay Rotary Charitable Foundation. And approve the $2,415 donation to Whitlock U.T. Technical College from the McDonald's tuition assistance program. Total, $21,207.
Yes ma'am. Good afternoon, board members. I would come for you today with the privilege of introducing to you the Associate Executive Director of the Florida High School Athletic Association, Mr. Craig Damon. Mr. Craig Damon oversees eligibility enforcement and compliance, legislative and legal affairs, sectional appeals, eligibility rulings, complaints and allegations. And he also is a coordinator of the Representative Assembly. We're privileged today to have Mr. Damon here this afternoon to present a commendation for service to one of our athletic directors. With that being said, Mr. Damon?
Good evening, Chair, this chairwoman. I thank you guys and the members of the board for y'all coming through today. It's almost like reunion because some of you, back in my days at the [inaudible 00:01:53] high school, get some opportunities to participate with. Superintendent Kimmell was served on section of appeals committee with me before. So it's great to be back here today with you guys. And I'm here to honor your home. Coach Wayne Allen, who has been gave great amount of years to the Florida High School Athletic Association in various roles. He serves on our section two appeals committee. He's been on our advisory committees. He serves on our representative assembly. He's a little bit of everything for them. And we thank you, Citrus County, for allowing him to be a part of what we do for our student athletes in the state of Florida. So on behalf of the Florida High School Athletic Association, I want to present Mr. Wayne Allen, just a token of our appreciation for his years of service to the Florida High School Athletic Association and students in the state of Florida.
We now have the honor of serving this last term with Mr. Allen, or Coach Allen, on sectional appeals. First of all, Mr. Damon does an amazing job. Florida is blessed in athletics to have a man who not only understands athletics, but understands the importance of our young people and the role that athletics can play in their lives and the impact it has on academics. And so, Mr. Damon, I do want to thank you very much for what you do every day for us.
Thank you.
And I have to tell you, on sectional appeals, and I said this to Mr. Damon earlier, Lyle Now is who I turn to a lot. But, you know, Coach Allen, those are some tough cases. And for board members, for those of you who don't know, and Superintendent kind of prepped me for this, it's like going to an expulsion at a lot of these. And there are some good days where you feel like you do good work. And there's some bad days where you shake your head and go, I think we made the right decision. But I often look to you. And not just because, you know, you care about what you feel as a coach. You have had that experience. You put students first. And you have an integrity about the organization, about the community you represent, and about Florida in general. And we are very blessed to have you. So thank you, and thank you for teaching me. The ultimate something to Coach Allen, we appreciate the work in getting into Citrus County. And also with the FHSA on the section appeals committee. It's a tough job. We know that there's always issues of eligibility and things that come up which is uncomplished. We want to have a fair system. I know you've been there, and you've taken those cases and made a decision. So thank you for your service. And thank you for Mr. Damon for coming here from Gainesville. I recognize Coach Allen. We appreciate you being here for that honor. And one more time, congratulations on the favor.
Mr. Damon really has knowledge of whatever he's doing. I remember for years back with the same group. And if he was up, he has to open it up. Appreciate you, Doug.
Thank you.
You know, one thing serving shows too. We have some of the finest athletic directors and coaches in the state of Florida and this nation. And I, every time we get through sectional appeals, I come back and I'm often seeing Mr. Bishop and saying, wow, I knew we had it good. I just didn't know we had it as good as we do. And for anyone who wants to know, Mr. Allen, I have watched him lecture other coaches and other athletic directors in ways though that truly was the right thing. And I think it needed to come from another peer for them to hear it. So again, thank you.
Happy birthday, Ms. Swain.
Thank you very much. I ask the board's approval of the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the Goldenrod.
There are a few I'd like to challenge. What are we going to do without Carol Bolton?
I know, we tried to stop that. Brendan did try to stop her physically. But we're not allowed to do that. So I know, we are very, very sad. It will be a huge loss to our department.
Yes, again?
Again.
I know.
And I didn't catch this before, but I don't remember seeing the gender equity code on the supplements, on personnel. Was that, we had a gender, that's showing as a gender equity. Can you explain that to me?
Mr. Bishop?
Yeah, many years ago, there was a Title IX enforcement committee put together. And that committee recommended that we, for schools who have a large number of female athletes participating in a given sport, to be able to apply for an additional coach, which is a gender equity supplement. Those numbers, it's been quite a few years since I dealt with it. But like, for example, if you're a softball coach and your softball program, if you have over 36, I believe that was the threshold. If you have over 36 kids in your program, you can apply for a gender equity supplement. So those are still on the list. We haven't taken those away. And those are really a first come, first served basis. Most often, our gender equity supplements are not used in its entirety.
But isn't Ms. Consonine going to be a coach?
I don't know specifically.
Support, so?
She's a support person?
She's a support staff person. And there's different rules in how we document their time if you're a support staff person to make sure we're in alignment with Fair Labor Standards Act.
So this is an extra position because of gender equity?
Is this, is this classified as a gender equity supplement?
Yes, sir.
Yes, so then they must have enough females on that to, it's above the threshold. And so they must have applied for a gender equity supplement for that position.
Okay, so are female athletic programs that don't, that they have a male coach, they will be able to wear a certain number, then they would apply for a female to have a gender equity position?
No, no, it has nothing to do with the gender of the coach. It has nothing to do with having a female sport and total number of kids participating in that given sport.
It's in lieu of having to cut kids.
That's exactly right.
So we wouldn't cut kids like we would normally do to get them down to management or not?
I got you.
We keep them so that because you have to cut. The intent is to get as many female athletes as we have male athletes.
So she's not hired on her gender to fit an acquisition?
There's no sort of [inaudible 00:01:59].
Gender equity with the students.
She's hired on the number of female students that we want to continue to have in the [inaudible 00:02:08].
That is correct.
Because it's a certain number, we're going to hire another coach as a gender equity to help balance or align for equity between male and female. Okay.
That's right.
That's how you do it.
Yes, sir.
You approve of the stretch on support recommendations that appear on Goldenrod?
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Olive Bander?
Aye.
Second item is I ask the board's approval of the new job description for Director of Federal Programs. And Mr. or Dr. Hubert is here to share any, answer any questions or share any information that you need.
I'd like him to approve it. Okay.
So I had some questions on this. And I'm looking forward to it. I think it's more for information purposes, right, for board and for us to understand going forward what the plan is. So it is on the agenda as a new administrative position. But yet, it is to make clear to me that this new position will be put in place, but the old position of the coordinator of no job left behind is going to be vacated.
Really be eliminated.
Will be eliminated. So really, it's not a new, a totally new position. It's just a kind of an upgrade or an updated position title. So I appreciate that. It is interesting because there is, even with cares of money, but with all the other federal programs we have, a lot of money that this district benefits from. So it seems advantageous to me, Dr. Hubert, when we spoke with this [inaudible 00:02:11], you know, good information that, you know, it makes a lot of sense to have this position. We also have a grant writer. And I've spoken with Dr. Hubert. I'm going to let him kind of explain to the board what they're thinking about and what they're looking at. But I also know that the state, or I've learned that the state is moving this way for a consolidated grant application process, which that makes a lot of sense to, and that we're a part of that. So I just kind of thought it might be good to have an overview of it.
So one of the pieces that Mr. Goddard mentioned is the consolidated grant. And that's what kind of got us thinking along these lines of really thinking about how we consolidate and look at how we manage our funds. Currently, you know, we have many federal programs that are managed by a multiple number of people. So Mrs. Taylor does some, Mrs. Boyfeller does some, and Ms. Johnson does some of our federal programs. So we thought it might make sense to have one person overseeing all that. So if we needed to have questions on how does this work, what we can do, we thought that would work. And they actually have been meeting now as we move with the state on a consolidated application and are finding ways that they can say, well, we can use this funds and these funds to pay for this position and actually create up some additional money to be able to provide more support for our schools. So that was kind of the move in that direction. Additionally, we have a grant writer that currently is under research and accountability in Ms. Crowell's department. It's been there for a number of years. Not sure the reason why it was there, but that's where it's been. So we thought of moving that particular position. There's already someone in that position underneath this position. So when those grants are written, when other grants are being looked at, that person can assist the Director of Federal Programs in writing the grants and making sure that those grants are being implemented appropriately. So that was kind of the whole purpose. I have Mrs. Taylor here, Ms. Boyfeller. If you have questions on their particular federal programs they oversee, they're still going to work with the implementation of it. They both will help support what happens. But the writing of the grant, overseeing of the funds will fall under this particular new position.
And, you know, when I looked at the job description responsibilities, I mean, this is some major responsibilities here. I mean, number 11 says ensure compliance of all federal, state, and district requirements. I mean, this, the buck's going to stop here with this person dealing with federal grants. And my point that when we spoke was that it has to be still a team approach to this. It can't be like, oh, good, now. All this federal stuff, and I dealt with a lot of things. The sheriff's office with the grants, you know, it's kind of, when it gets off your back, it feels really good. Now I'm not responsible for it anymore. But yet, with the complexity of these funds and how they go into different areas of our district, you know, it has to still be a great team, team approach to this. So, you know, I like it. I just thought it was worth the discussion to have. I think my writing position naturally to be fit in the series two. So I'm glad you're considering that.
Any other questions or comments? Or anything you'd like to hear from Ms. Taylor or Ms. Boyfeller?
I think this is a good interim step. I think it's the right step forward at this time. Did we have a motion on it? If we did, okay.
Olive Bander?
Aye.
My third agenda item is to ask the board's approval of the new job description for Employee Benefits Analyst. And Mr. Baumers here, if you have any questions, you will be happy to answer them.
I have no idea. Did you ask that before I started? Okay, I was looking at [inaudible 00:01:55]. I was looking at this really long, responsibilities. I think Mr. Goddard was talking about responsibilities. He's probably a federal person. Incredible responsibilities. They never quite have an asterisk degree. They would be higher than a [inaudible 00:01:59]. But this person, as I understand, would be netting salary of $11.7, which is $14.02 an hour. And I'm sitting there and I'm thinking, what? On TV, you see, you know, you scramble eggs. You're supposed to get $15 a month. And this person apparently has to run half the world. I mean, what are all the responsibilities that this person has? I have to know about everything to do with the funds, with insurance, with the, what does he does with retirement? A whole list of things he gets with the level seven job. And it requires only a high school diploma. I don't think it's possible for anyone with a high school diploma or a killer to not have the experience to be able to do this and who else would depend on the fact that they've done it correctly? Many people with high school diplomas that are very, very good, that you have that experience too. And I personally think that this should be a technical position. And the qualification should be bachelor's degree.
Did you say bachelors or masters?
Bachelors. It's very low, it's bachelor's. And you mentioned a master's. I think it's a good idea. I wonder if you were talking about a federal. This, it's asking too little on qualifications for a job that affects every single person employed in the school system. Every person has to deal with what's on, what this person's supposed to do, to know what to do and what a responsible is. So I would ask you personally, Melinda, if you would take this back and have the [inaudible 00:02:58]. At least a bachelor's degree.
But Ms. Powers, this is part of a team effort too, though.
Oh, I have.
This is not, and I guess what I'm thinking is, many of us, you know, go to financial service companies in the district. Even the district uses those. And to get a Series Six in order to purchase and sell stocks, you do not have to have a bachelor's degree. You don't even have to have a, I mean, any degree. You would just have to pass a test. And I would only say that I thought that this particular person was really almost more of a clerical that reported to your department, not that they were the actual.
In a manner of speaking, there are some roles that they would be responsible for some things. But most of, as you can see on here, is to assist our employee benefits specialist and to assist myself. They assist with many of the things that are going on. They do conduct new hire orientations with our new hires that come in to explain, and just in general, what our benefits are. They would be a liaison for helping employees file claims, get them the right documents if they need to file claims.
Very, very true. The person does that and does it correctly. And really, I would say, maybe I should just look at masters. I don't think I would, yes, I said, bachelors at the very least. It's a job that is necessary, worthwhile. Should be fueled by a person with some knowledge. Shouldn't be the pay that a person scramble eggs is paid. It affects every single person in this school system. And I think that.
But they're not the person, though, that makes the final decision. The specialist would.
All of us work together and make the final decision.
No, but in this particular role, though, they, the specialists would be the ones that would be doing the heavy lifting. This analyst was, is, again, a clerical. I'm thinking in real estate, for example, we have, you know, assistants. Some of those will go and get their, you know, their real estate license. But they won't be the ones that actually do all of it other than do some introductory. This seems to be, again, in those same roles, and they don't get the same salary. I definitely see the concern, but because we have a specialist there, I'm trying to think economically how we, I mean, really would sound like then we're talking about going to a specialist at that point. You're talking about hiring another specialist.
Yeah, and that's not something that, I mean, as of right now, the position's unfilled. It has been filled by a district secretary for the past few years. And our specialist has been the one who's been bearing more of the brunt of that. And I'll be honest with you, the Affordable Care Act did not disappear. The IRS has become more stringent towards employers on what the employers are doing. So there's more reports after you file more paperwork that we have to do every time a new employee enrolls. And so right now, our specialist is the one who's responsible for it. This person, being the analyst, would be able to assist with that just to help with the enrollment of the employees. So our specialist can make sure that the paperwork that's filed with the IRS is filed in a timely manner and is filed correctly. So this person here will have some responsibilities along with inputting employees' benefits, which currently are being done by our district secretary now. Yeah, true. But the final say will go through the benefits specialist and myself as to what needs to be submitted to, accounts payable to be billed, or what needs to be sent to Florida Blue.
And I agree with Tom because I don't think a bachelor's degree or a master's degree is going to fit any of these job responsibilities. And I see, I see this as Tom does. You only have to have a high school diploma to get a real estate license and be a broker and deal with millions of dollars. And this is very special. It's, I would think the experience is more important than any college degree really is. If you wanted to add, you know, three years of experience.
Well, in any organization you go into with benefits, it's going to be streamlined to what their organization is. So if we can find the right person to fit with our team in Mesquite, training that person as we have for the past few employees to work well with our team, that's going to be the key to it.
If they don't work well with our team, they can't come.
Absolutely. So we've got to find my person.
But I, I just, I don't see a college education.
No, I don't see that. But I see as.
But I think anybody that has experience in all this, with insurance or real estate, can handle every one of these.
I don't think so.
And I think it is, it is a joint staff. And it's not going to be just one person all the responsibility.
I'd say if there are four of us sitting here, you'd have the experience in real estate. I bet you you could do this. This is involved. And I want, we're an educational institution. We're supposed to have people who are educated, knowledgeable, who vote for the right thing. And it's not just.
But real estate and insurance has its own specialties. I mean, there are real estate meetings, just like our state's board meetings. Real estate people have their own education system. And so do the insurance people. And it's getting people to join those forums and those meetings to get that, earn that. But the college is not going to teach a kid how to.
It's not necessarily the college that we're talking about. I really think the college provides some degree of understanding for the person. But it is an important job. And that's what I'm trying to speak. What we're all talking about is it's not an important job. Just a secretary, a person who drops in for the day. Maybe someone who's hired out of the McDonald's. They can do it. They cannot do it, and they cannot get it right. And this involves every single person in the school system. I think we should have someone who is very, very capable to do the job right, not just a person. And how many people even have this position? Have they been there 20 years? That's pretty good. But if they only get there one, two, three, four years, if they go because they aren't compensated well enough or not treated well enough, or whatever it is, something's wrong. So for me, it has to be someone who's very experienced. It has to be someone who's very edgy. It has to be someone who can get the respect that everybody wants. Because anything that you want is going to go from here. Yes, Doug?
Yeah, and I mean, I'm glad you pulled it. I really, when I first read it, I just, I was under the impression that it's a new job description, that there's, kind of like we're updating it. But now I heard you say that there's nobody in the position right now?
Correct.
Okay, so the person that's doing the work right now, are they, is that position going to be eliminated?
No, it's the specialist who's doing the work. And I'm doing some of it myself.
No, but, I mean.
They had a district secretary.
Yeah, we have a secretary in the position.
And we realized when we saw district secretary, we looked at all of the analysts, the payroll analysts, the finance analysts, the personnel analysts. We looked at them and thought, that job description was very comparable to the analyst position. And we discussed it being a seven because all of the analysts were at a seven. So that's why we made that decision.
So instead of the secretarial position, is it, we brought up then to this?
To this, yes.
This secretary that's doing the work right now, you're.
No, this is, the benefit specialist is doing the work. The person who's above this is currently doing that work along with what they're doing. And I'm doing some of it as well.
Yeah, so now I've got, I'm a little bit more confused because the dollar amount of $888 is a dollar. So I thought we were taking a position, creating the new job description for what that position's going to be. And that, if that position would then go into this new job description, and they would get $888 more?
Yes.
Is that, am I?
Whenever we hire someone for it. Currently, that position you're speaking of, the district secretary position, is unoccupied, is vacant. So with this new job description is approved, we will post for that position, and they will be hired as an analyst.
So it has nothing to do with the secretarial position then right now?
Correct. We have a, there's a secretary in risk management, and then we have an open position.
And this is going to be funded through the Lou Crossfield Self-Insurance.
The difference is, yes. Does current.
So we have the position funded on position control. It's just not filled.
We have it funded, yes, right now. It's the district secretary. We would delete the district secretary position and make it.
Pass the difference.
Yes, so that's the difference.
Is the district secretary position filled right now?
No.
But there is a district secretary now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but this is another district secretary that you want to upgrade to the.
Yes, and then they, they won't have that district secretary.
Right. But it's still not filled right now, though, either way.
Or that person went through another deformed.
It's budgeted. We have it budgeted, right? But we just don't have it filled. And so before we filled it, you wanted to upgrade it to an analyst, give it a little more pay. And make it even with our other.
Analysts.
Analysts.
Yes, sir. Because the person that was in that position left because they went to a position that's a seven within our district.
I got you.
And so we know that this job is working, certainly, to a level seven. It was just a transportation analyst, payroll analyst, personnel analyst, and so on, so forth.
So out of respect to Ms. Powers, I do see, I mean, it would have to be fair across the board if we wanted to look at the analyst position. I don't know. I mean, I can't see us increasing a position here if other analysts. I mean, I can't see us increasing a position here if other analysts in the district are doing like work. It would have to be all of them, and I'm not sure right now is the time to do that. It's kind of, I think. And I think you've made a great point, because I feel the same way. I appreciate the concern greatly that Ms. Powers is saying, and she makes some apples and limes points. But like you said, we have analysts all over the district that are doing that same work. If we do that, then we would need to pull all of those, and that would be a very significant economic change and shift in, and even that entire position and role, because, again, we're talking about payroll analysts, which are the first that come to mind, which really do a lot of the same background work. They're collecting the monies that these are doing. The whole point of this, I think, is that there are checks and balances.
Correct.
This person is not doing all of that analysis alone, and then that decision is left with that analyst. It moves up to the specialist, and then I believe it still has to cross your desk. So there gives me comfort that this is, that this is not just one person.
No.
That is at that level, that's just going to be, you know, signing off all the var.
No, that is correct. That is correct.
So within this, there are responsibilities written down for this person. So if you can't, if something doesn't happen, that's the person that you go to by this page, their responsibility is there, but not this responsibility set up before.
Yes.
So something's wrong there with the paper or something.
No, that's their responsibility to do that. Then they would send it up to either myself or to the specialist, and then to me. So they don't, they wouldn't just do this and then send it on its way. Those things would still cross my desk most of all.
And that's normal to try to.
But most of the position refers to that they're assistant.
Yes.
And they're going to assist in preparation. They're assisting in the coordinating, which I'm assuming is where that.
Yes.
That comes to the specialist and to you. They're not the ones that are responsible solely for that. So I, I think staff has looked at that. I think it's based consistently off of what our other analysis are. And I, I think the one thing is, you're going to monitor this.
Oh, absolutely.
So if we find that it's not meeting the needs, I know staff will come back to us and say it's not, it's not the case.
And this has been not meeting the needs for many, many years. So I.
What, what do you mean, it's not meeting the needs?
I mean the needs of the teachers, meeting the needs of people employed in this system. People have made mistakes over and over and over again. Now, why they made, I don't know. That they did make them, that's correct. So I want someone in there with as much knowledge and ability not to make this better, not to be surprised if something's supposed to be different.
But I guess I'm concerned, that's a.
For the statutes.
But Ms. Powers, we're, we're saying here, you're saying from the podium that there's lots of mistakes? I don't know that that's.
I'm saying there have been. I don't know right now, I can't attest to that. But in the past, there have been lots of mistakes. People have been thrown in there to do something like this stuff. They come to classroom, come to school, thrown in to do it. And I won't mention names of people, but they have been, and those have been around a while, know who I'm talking about. And they didn't, they didn't want to do it, they just, it was something they had to do, they had to move on to change. And, but the most important thing to me is, this affects all teachers, all people employed by this school system, and I think we should be fair to all people. And I don't think it is fair to without having a person who has all this knowledge to be able to help the students.
And I, this person is not going to have that ability to make final decisions. She's got to go through.
Correct.
Two more steps, and ultimately, the monkey's going to wind up on Mr. Bong's back.
Yes, sir.
So that mistakes that they make hasn't been at this level.
Really, most teachers, you know, when you do research, you said write a paper, you have to be very, very involved in the research, give the right answers, give the right questions. I think that's what I'm saying about this person, they have to have the right questions, the right answers, they have to know what they're doing. And I don't want that, that someone doing maybe, of someone who extrapolates real well into this.
I think we have to wait till we have that person apply, and then we have to trust the staff to make the judgment if this person is capable of doing this responsibility.
And at no point will this person be turned loose on their own without proper training, supervision along the way. I mean, no one becomes an expert in the field of insurance overnight, because it's ever-changing. And as these changes occur, we learn together, and the group comes together in my office many times, and we talk about the things that we've got to work through, use our contacts at Florida Blue or through Crown to ask advice and guidance, and we do that as a team. So there will be a lot of training going on for whoever it is, even if this person comes from an insurance background, the way we do insurance, the way we process things, the way we handle our employees is much different than you will find in just about any organization in America, because our employees are our friends, and they're our family. So we treat them a lot differently, and we handle things a lot more personally than you'll find in other organizations. So we're going to find somebody who fits that mold for us, and we're not going to set them loose on their own until we're comfortable that they know how we do business, how we expect business done.
I understand that, and I would agree, we are in a way a family, and so we should be able to provide for the members of that family the best job that we can do so. This is my view.
I agree with you a little bit, Ms. Powers, but there are no perfect people. Everybody's going to make a mistake every now and again.
And I think we have a history at this board of excellent staff that works together across, across departments and things like that, so.
And want to keep that type of thing with.
These guys are going to interview and hire this analyst, and they're, and they're going to field.
So then why don't we provide a job description that you like it's good, that it's really going to do the job.
I like job descriptions more, because they define expectations, but this is not, this is not going to be the guy that's out front. This is going to be an assistant. It's not going to be a final decision maker. It's going to be an assistant to these people that have been with us for years, and we trust.
Would you like to call the questions?
Have we had a motion to?
Not yet.
I move that we accept the new job description for employee benefits analysis.
Second?
It was been moved by Mr. Kepke, who's asked to accept the description for employee benefits analyst. Any other statements? Hope we're going to call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Got three, all, was that three?
Aye.
Four, okay. And all nine in favor, me most rigorously nine in favor of it. So it's a four to one decision, and I'm exceptionally disappointed. But we'll go on.
Thank you, have a good afternoon.
Thank you, thank you.
This is the time of year when I bring you the end of the year report, which is a year-over-year report on your enrollment, so you can make decisions regarding facilities and zoning, school zoning. And at the end of the presentation, which I would keep brief, I would like you to review and accept the summary of the school capacity report, which you have in your backup, and approve the 2021, 22 Controlled Open Enrollment Plan, and then advertise the public hearing for the attendance bounty maps, April 13th, for our meeting. And.
All in one motion.
All in one motion. And essentially, this is a unique year. This is the first year we've had a pandemic since I've been doing this, so we've had two.
Let's hope it's the last season that you're having to do that.
Made some adjustments along the way. But essentially, I'll just go through the high schools. As you can see, La Canto High School, given the students who are, have reserved seats, and I'll come back to that. And you're at zero capacity. Last year, you had 5% capacity. Citrus High, you're in good shape, you had 15% capacity. Last year, you had 18%. Crystal River High School, 19%. Last year, you had 21%. So what that shows you is, the high school enrollment is up from last year, or the end of the year in 2019, to the end of the year in 2020. Middle schools, you know, they're about flat. You don't really have a lot of concern there, except maybe for La Canto, which is at 4%. And then the elementary schools, you have Hernando Elementary, which is still overcapacity, and La Canto Primary, which is at capacity, given the students who have reserved seats. All in all, you have 172 more high school students, 12 less middle school students, and 222 less elementary school students, for a total of negative 62, which isn't that bad compared to the surrounding counties. We're actually, there are a number of students, around 200 students, who are probably in homeschool, or probably doing Florida Virtual School, but I can assure you that they're still out there, and at some point, they're going to come back.
Mr. Dixon, I'm sorry, I got to have you repeat that.
Well, there are a number.
I think there's a lot more than 200 homeschool students out there.
No, what I'm talking about from our projections. If you look at the number of students that we projected, there are around 200 students who are not there that we projected to be there. So those students are.
Not enrolled, you're not talking about enrollment in programs, you're just talking about that you.
Enrollment in general, approximately.
Yes, that's what I meant.
So it's a problem statewide, it's not just Citrus County, but Ms. Humboldt and I have looked at it by grade level, and I think we understand that they are still out there, they're not going away. At some point, we're going to see them. If you had a child who was not eligible or didn't have to start kindergarten when this happened, they probably didn't start kindergarten. So you're going to have more students as a result of it.
And that's across the state.
Yes, across the whole country.
I forget what the number was, but he said there are this many students missing, and that was from our projections.
Yes, but they're still there.
They're somewhere.
Now, what I would, my recommendation is going to be based on the projections for next year, which I will come to, is to re-adopt the elementary school boundaries as is, sway here, re-adopt the middle school boundaries and the high school boundaries. I'd like to add language to the Controlled Open Enrollment Plan, as we talked about when we were updating the policy for the military families. That's a requirement that's in our policy that you've already approved. And that Controlled Open Enrollment Plan is on our website, and that's what students who want to go to out-of-schools look to, to see how we process those. And then, as far as the projections for next year, we do those in January, because after we take the snapshot in December, we wait until January, because that's typically the time when students move, and it's the best indicator of what's going to be happening in the fall of that year in terms of enrollment. So our projections, based on cohort progression, are down 21 elementary students, down 47 elementary students, or middle school students, and up 183 high school students. So even in addition to the ones we saw this year, we're going to have 183 more, just based on cohort progression, which is moving all the grade levels up in grade.
And that will be projected for, what did you say that was projected for?
For the fall.
Fall.
We project, we make the projections in January for the following fall, because that's what TAMI uses for the budget, and that's what we use for staff.
So our FTE count in October, then, will.
Well, it's definitely having nothing to do with FTE.
Right.
Directly, but this is just enrollment.
It's enrollment, right.
So we're going to have more high school students, and that brings me to the next topic, which was Citrus Virtual School. And if we have students coming back into the high school, into the brick and mortar, at the same time we're having more students enroll, where we may have more students than we really can fit in the school, particularly the Canto High Schools. And what I may ask you to do later on is to read up that policy that saves seats for one more year, so that we can wait and see. And we may modify it a little bit, but we may bring it back to you for consideration based on, you know, the high school enrollment.
Wouldn't we need to do that sooner rather than later? I'm just thinking because the end of the year's coming, and.
I think you want to do it in the next couple of months.
Most of this seems to be stuff that's been on your radar. I mean, there didn't seem to be a lot that was out of line with what you've kind of, you regularly brief us about and keep our concerned about, and of course, our capital plan is pretty much.
Based on this.
Is based all on this.
And all of our projects, you know, are listed, and, you know, based on our plan, we're going to eventually, if we have to, we're planning on moving supportables from Full City for the additional enrollment at La Canto. If, if a lot of students still enroll in Citrus Virtual, we may not have to do that, you know, whereas much of that. So it's not all bad, it's just something we have to be aware of at this time and, you know, manage it.
I think one of the things that this report did in along the ways is that while there is this transition of students happening throughout our state and our nation, for the most part, we're still being steady. But we are seeing brick and mortar students coming, so even if some do go to virtual, like you said, it's probably only going to be, help us a little bit in that.
It may help us for a couple of years.
Right.
Have that cushion there, the high school level in particular. But we're watching the virtual enrollment. The high number was in August 26th at 4,093. The low number was in February at 1931, and we're currently around 1944. So, you know, we're going to plan for that as best we can, and we may come back and ask you to, you know, modify that policy and carry it forward for another year, based on what decision is made. Any questions?
Did you, did you say you did need acceptance of this item B?
Yes, the, accept the capacity report and approve the Controlled Open Enrollment Plan and set the public.
Remove approval. One second.
Do you think that this person would accept the school capacity report, approve the control of the elementary school, that the student's security, that the school year is a federal option, that they.
I've got, I still have some other questions. So, Mr. Dixon, this is your entire report, the 16-page report, right, that we're approving?
Well, you're just accepting it. If you have questions about it, Mr. Goddard, it's just a general overview. You can always contact me, and I'll tell you what specific status everything is, but it's a snapshot in time in there, it's like.
Yeah, it's a great report, I mean, a lot of good information here. I still, you know, I wish that there was a middle school traffic issue could be moved up, or else I could remove that.
That particular thing is not really related to what we're doing with respective capacity, but we are looking at other options.
It is in the report, though.
It is in there, it's still on the radar, we're trying to. I can tell you, you're getting ready to see agenda items to sell some land to the Department of Transportation for the roadway, and after we get kind of an idea of how that's going to affect the school, we may look at other options for relieving traffic around the school there.
The school will be what, steady on school, and it's new school?
Yes, that might help some, but we're still looking at other options too, because we know there's issues there that we can.
And I noticed that Full City Elementary Expansion is still, I mean, it's your overview.
Yes.
But it's still targeted to begin 2022.
It's still very much live.
Aye.
Wait, wait, wait. Did we have any exciting news today? Because there was, there was a Board of County Commission meeting.
Yes, they accepted all your projects, Greenback, Feecon, that are related to the growth, so.
It's great news.
That'll take care of some.
How old are you?
And they, and it sounds like they did accept. And they, and it sounds like they did accept the impact fee funding, and it'll be at the current percentage rate. Or have they new recommended, or?
Well, they didn't get to that yet. That comes up on the 26th.
Got it.
And they will load on that then, so.
But this is, that's as encouraging.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
We're good, yes.
And it's five up.
All right. She's tied up down, just her bullet. Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to ask approval for the Budget Amendment Number Five, amended as of January 2021. The biggest changes on here, just let you know, we closed out our capital projects that were finished this past year, that put about $92,000 back into the capital fund. And we also did have another CARES Act civic literacy reading, which is to buy some curriculum for reading that was awarded this month. So those are probably some of the major differences than any other month, so.
Can you put the four and five together?
Um, Ms. Kaler and Renee, Ms. Johnson, those two put that together, what we were going to buy with that funds, with those funds. They kind of told us they had a list, and then they get to pick from the list what we're going to buy.
I'll move that we accept the Budget Amendment Number Five. Second.
I'm sorry, I did have a question on the second page, and the general fund increases of revenue and appropriations, we've got a lot of matches there, but the estimated revenue for transportation insurance claims, that is one claim?
That's a couple of different small claims that transportation has for insurances. Yes, sir.
So, yeah, it didn't yet increase the appropriation side?
Because once they need, sometimes they need the budget, and sometimes they don't. Once they run out of budget, then we'll add the budget for them. But as of right now, they haven't needed the, they are able to handle that within their own capacity.
Okay. And then I noticed that we increased appropriations for athletics, right?
Yes.
Okay, can we explain?
This is funding that we've helped the schools out with, since they're seeing a lack of income coming in due to our capacity for football and soccer, and, you know, they don't have that money coming into their internal funds, so we've had to, the districts had to fork out some money to help them with different things.
Well, and certainly hope, I mean, I'm glad to see that, because, you know, that's part of, that's why, you know, that's why we have some reserves to help out. I mean, we're in the middle of a pandemic, and we don't want to see our athletic program suffer, so I appreciate the superintendent, you know, helping those schools, and I hope we include the middle schools in there too, and we'll continue to do that, because that's a cost for the district that if we, you know, their ticket sales are way down from normal, so, you know, the income is not there, but we need, I'm glad we're stepping up to the plate, and hope, you know, we continue on that track, so that those programs don't suffer.
And well, sir, we did include those schools. We covered the cost of their reconditioning for four years, as well as the rest of coverage for four years. Any other questions? Any other?
Any questions in progress? All of the budgets for Budget Amendment Five?
Hi.
Hi.
Those S5s. All right. So to move on to cash investments, financials, and the budget update, kind of wrap all those in one. You've got your cash investment report. Just, just a little tidbit fact of interest, I thought I'd look up how much interest we earned last January. Last January, we earned $231,543.79 in interest or increased value of our money. Interest rates were running 1.25 to about 2.28 is what we were earning on our funds. This January, we lost $38.92. Our interest rates are nothing to 64 basis points, and that is doing well compared to, you know, I keep my eyes out, and if there's any, any time value certificates we can get, you know, I approached the board, we did one right when the pandemic started, we were earning 90 basis points. Nothing's coming in right now over 20 basis points for a time series deposit, so just a little, you know, fact of how the pandemic has affected not only staffing and helmet reconditioning and things, but we've also, that's, you know, $230,000 worth of interest we did not earn that we earned last year. So that's just a little bit of information on that, and this next, I think it's next month, April, we'll be looking for our next sinking fund government obligation bond that we'll be buying. So it'll be very interesting what interest rates we get on that this year compared to the last few years. They've gotten a little better and better, and how much that will cost us. And just a reminder, the sinking fund is, we buy an investment every year, so that when the $35 million final payment comes in, we have that money already saved. So we're obligated, per our agreement, per legislation, we have to buy a certain type of investment, so we have our advisors go out, and they find us the best investment, and we'll be doing that next month. In regards to the financial statements, our general fund is doing better right now than it was last year. That big part of that is that we've moved a lot of things to the CARES fund, we moved a lot the end of last year, a lot of things we moved this year. Our revenue is up a little bit, and that's because the FEFP is kicking in that TSA allocation, so that's been coming in a little bit at a time, a little more than we would have seen last year coming in. Food service fund balance is actually up now, so we were able to help them out the beginning of this year, so that they were looking, they were going to go in the red, and they're actually in the black this month, so that's a good thing. We have spent about 56.42% of our original CARES Act, the original ESR. Of course, they keep giving us all these little grants every, every month, it seems like we're getting a new grant, and those are very specific. We're still waiting on news on the ESR2 funds, you know, what those are going to mean for us. We have not heard anything, just rumblings out there, nothing concrete. Capital fund is down a little bit from last year, and that, I'm going to tell you, is mostly due to interest, because the capital fund is the majority of our cash that we have, and so it's not earning any money right now. And our self-insurance fund is still holding strong. So as far as our financial statements, we're maintaining, we're making it through the pandemic. We've been making, you know, we've made cuts, we have a lot of expenses we didn't incur at the end of last year, we didn't have a lot of fuel expenses, a lot of, you know, overtime expense type things that we normally would have seen once we went into quarantine last year. That this year, we will see those expenses. Fuel is increasing, we all know that, we go to the pump every day, so as we look forward to budgeting, we're getting out to the departments and the schools now at the workshop. We'll, I'll come to you with, you know, where we are with the budget. Mr. Bishop and I are going to work on putting something together for capital, so you can see where we are, how much we've spent of our work plan dollars this year. I'll also bring to you an update on what CARES funds we have, the additional ones that we've received in the last, like I said, it seems like every month, every week, almost they're sending us a little, a little bit more money, a little bit more money, but we still don't have the big chunk of money, so I'll bring those to you at the workshop this month. Any questions?
When you say we still don't have a big chunk of money, I thought we already spent a big chunk.
Well, that's the ESR funds. We have ESR2 funds that are supposed to be coming from the second round of stimulus funds that the legislature approved. You know, we got our second stimulus payments, people got their stimulus payments, money went to the DOE, they have not distributed any information to the school districts yet. We just have tentative figures of what we possibly could be receiving in the ESR2 funds.
So 5 million, we've received a little over 5 million?
Correct.
And so what is the projection on the ESR2?
Um, what we've heard is about 13 million over a two-year period. So, but there's nothing, like I said, there's been, you know, figures have been thrown out there, there's been different things, Ms. Johnson's gotten things from her committees and things that she's on with estimations, but the DOE last year, they came out, they gave us the money, we had like a couple of weeks to put everything together, then they changed it all at the last minute, so we don't know when they'll come out with anything for this. Hopefully sooner than later. We've been working on Dr. Hebert's group, Mr. Mullin, Dr. Hebert, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Crowell, a bunch of us met already, kind of trying to project what we'd use it on, you know, to bring our students back up, their, their learning. They want us to focus on HVACs, getting new HVACs and money, is what we've been told. So we just haven't gotten anything definite and concrete from the DOE yet on exactly how much and exactly how we're supposed to spend it.
So I guess we can complain a little bit about not making the interest up. My golly, you're getting CARES funds up.
Sounds like it, but we have to remember, there's a cliff, you know, we're going to get that, but it's not going to continue on forever, you know, it's for a two-year period as of right now. So that's why we need to do those one-time things, upgrade the HVACs, bring our students back up to the learning levels where they were, so additional expenses that we're incurring due to the pandemic. All right, any other questions? All right, you have a good evening.
Thank you.
Wes, you have attorney legal matters?
Oh, yeah.
All good. Um, I didn't know, well, we do take comments at the end of business, but at 5:15, so, okay. Do you want to go ahead and do that? Okay.
Do you have minutes?
Did you want to approve minutes?
Yes.
She said after.
Oh, do it after, okay. For one, I just wanted to thank the Board of County Commissioners for approving our capital projects. We do appreciate their support, and especially with it being a 5.0 code, that is wonderful. Mr., I know Mr. Dixon's gone, but I appreciate his work on that. Assistant Superintendent Bishop, I know you, you and your entire team worked pretty hard developing those capital lists of the data behind it, the information behind it, so that we, so that when we have that information, it can get to the commissioners, and they can understand it. So I appreciate that, and other than that, I am good.
Yes, I'll repeat that, reiterate what Mr. Kenny said, appreciate County Commission, their support of our impact fee funded, allowable funded projects, and we want to continue to, you know, work together. I know we are working with all our city and county boards to make it what's best for students, so I know we looked at that project too, I think it was on the consent agenda with the pump station over there in Crystal River and the property that we're going to donate, so, you know, we all work together, and that's a great thing. I would say that I spoke a little bit to Mr. Bommer about surveys for My Health Onsite. I thought it might be good for us to put a survey out, not us, but ask them to survey, you know, the customers, since Care Here was changed over to My Health Onsite, I've heard a couple, couple things, and I just thought it might be a good thing just to get a response from, you know, our employees who use that program, use that, we want them to use it, it's a great program, and I just thought, I asked them questions, and he said that they have monthly meetings with the care team, and that he was certainly right in that, so I guess Care Here had done some in the past, so I thought it would be a good thing, I mean, they've been at it now, gosh, it's been a little over a year, hasn't Mr. Bishop?
No, we're coming up on it here.
Okay. Thanks, so, yeah, so it'd be good just to-
We'll be able to reach out to My Health Onsite, the national board, or My Health Onsite, or get them to sort of-
Yes, and just also, they would have an update after the, at the end of the year, so I know you guys can do that, so. I appreciate that. So I did, I haven't listened to all of the legislative training yet from FSBA, but I have pretty good stuff, Mr. Dixon.
Oh, I wanted to just tell you too, Senate Bill 86, this was the Bright Futures one, it was temporarily postponed, so bearing something unusual, that one is gone. I apologize, you just made up-
I'd like to say something back to my help, if you don't mind.
Yes.
But they've been exempt off the schools.
With what?
Florals, like the florals in the February hills.
Yes, they've upgraded, looks pretty nice, yes, yes.
That's a lot of time to come.
You know, a point, I brought this up at SAC meeting too, because Mr. Corcoran, the Commissioner of Education, brought up a point in his talk about third grade literacy. I mean, we're all big on that, and we know the pandemic is hurting students, and we want to do everything we can to improve our third grade literacy scores, and it's statewide focused. It was interesting that he had said that statewide, only 58% of third graders pass with a 3, 4, or 5 for third grade literacy. And then those who score a 1 or 2 in third grade, which, you know, I wrote it down because I was surprised, said that-
Me too.
86% of those third graders who score a 1 or 2 on third grade literacy still are at 1 or 2 in 10th grade. And so the focus, you know, we continue to focus on reading, and, you know, I've tried to continue that idea, you know, with children reading, I mean, I wish I had read more as a child, and, you know, so our elementary grades, that, you know, kindergarten through third grade is so important. So I know his goal as a state was 90% for third grade literacy, that's what we're going to be pushing towards, but it is pretty amazing to hear that correlation of, you know, those kids that don't do well in third grade, 86% of them are still doing poorly in 10th grade, so I just, you know, it's a good tidbit of information. We know that a well-educated child is a great benefit for society, and we continue to focus on that, so that's all I have.
Well, I know, I share with Mr. Goddard the SAC meeting, because I have three of the elementary schools, and they are tracking, they're using that already, and they seem to be pretty confident about the kids that are going to be tested this spring, that kids, first time, are looking forward to being tested this Black Year, so I agree with you there, and hopefully, the IRE is right, and we should, we should be ahead of those numbers, state numbers. I want to say again, thanks to the County Commissioners, I think our annual sum of meeting that Commissioner Kitchen started several years ago, we were a little happy this year, and I think it was so positive that, I think, the last statement that Mr. Kitchen made as we were leaving that sum of meeting was, we trust that schoolwork and our staff, and so they just, they just showed with that 5.0, because we haven't squandered money, we haven't wasted money, this district never has. I think the first time we ever borrowed money to build a school was for the future of high school renovation. Other than that, we always had the money before we did the project, so it's been very physically sound. And it sounds like maybe we're supposed to be getting through this pandemic without too much of a loss, where other, where other boards are having playoff pictures and having a really bad time with the money. where other, where other boards are having playoff pictures and having a really bad time with the money. So I'm, I'm still, I got out of SAC meeting because they're changing from next week to this week. So I've had a SAC meeting at three thirty this afternoon, but we'll find out, it's looking at a middle school. But again, I just, I just think, I think this year is going to come to an end in December and I think we'll be back on track hopefully. Everybody's going to still continue to stay safe. We're coming on spring break, so we have to save a little prayer for everybody. Keep masks on, stay social distance and come back to school. But I'm looking forward to the end of the year, but it's looking a little bit brighter. And I appreciate everything that Mr. Tito has done. He's, he's kept our kids safe, we've listened to him and we've done exactly what he's told us to do and so far we've got a pretty good report. And Mrs. Simms is going to give that report on Friday, Chamber of Commerce.
Thanks, that was good. Yeah, I want to thank the county commissioners as well. It's awesome that they supported us, truly appreciate it. Pandemic time, maybe all the help we can get, as long as we work together, it'll be a good thing. I've got a, best A's meeting tomorrow, 4:30. Oh, I can do that on time with the Kansas program. Yeah, that's something I have.
And just edge on the sidewalk, just then we all attend to this stuff, because the sidewalk, about five minutes.
Yeah, we do, I forgot we did that.
Very nice sidewalk.
I was going to say, we can ask that, but I do want to make sure there's something I wanted to tell you guys so we can take it after public input, but about SAC funding and something that's on the legislative. And I think you may want to be aware of it in case you're asked.
Approval?
Second.
You can let him go ahead and speak now, Mr. Moore. We aren't being a business.
We are, well, we have enough time. Joanne?
Yes, ma'am. Could you state your name?
Sure.
Hi, I'm Joanne Pasengo. I have two kids in the school system, a kindergarten and an eighth grader. And my major concern with my kindergarten is he's never going to understand facial expressions with his teacher wearing a mask and every adult around him wearing a mask. And he already has audio processing disorder, so that face-to-face contact is so important. His teacher had told me that she can speak to him and he's just, it's like you can't, she's like, I don't understand. And I said, she goes, well, it is clearly audio processing disorder, I can see it. And he's halfway through kindergarten, he's done the testing twice and he is not kindergarten level yet. And that just breaks my heart because he's so smart, he's so pleasant, he's so kind, but yet he cries on the way to school because the morning work is too hard. And how do I help him? I can't even go into the school to help, you know, help out in the classroom with any work being done. And I don't know what to tell him because he's very, he needs that facial expression to know if it's a positive or a negative. He knows my eyes, but he can't tell if someone's smiling under a mask. I can tell, but he cannot. He's my major concern, my second concern is my eighth grader. I asked him on the way here, I said, is there anything you'd want me to bring up to the school where when I go, on your behalf? And he said, yes. What is that? And he said, me having to wear the mask all day makes me dizzy from inhaling all that carbon dioxide all day long. And I see the kids at the middle school outside the PE with masks on when they're social distancing outside and they have masks on, they're sweating. And I don't know how we can rectify that if we possibly can as soon as possible. My babies need something. We follow every rule possible, we've been healthy all year, thank God. But I think it's time, we just let the kids go. So I hope you would take that into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Yeah, the, so I, I, the governor made, has, you know, as we know, made a very encouraging proposal when it comes to the budgets. And a lot of times, you know, we, we like the governor's budget, we just don't know that it'll, it'll happen that way. And I think this governor has a very strong faith that, that a lot of his proposals will, will happen in some fashion. One of the ones that he's looking to do is to not fund the school recognition funds. I'm okay with that in general because that has been funds that have been, they've been controversial, often in the way they have to be voted on at SAC meetings. And it sometimes pits one employee against another employee in, in reference to those bonuses. And they're all determined through students' outcomes having to do with standardized testing. So if they want to move that back into the base student allocation, I am more than willing to have that happen. Here's the but. A number of years back, they tied the school recognition funds with the $5 per student funding of our school advisory accounts. Now, you all, especially Ms. Bryant and Ms. Powers and, and even those of us as, as parents and so forth have been, and Miss Kance is a teacher, have been there long before it was funded that way. Because it used to be funded at $10 a student and it had nothing to do with school recognition funds because there were none. The trouble now is there is no mechanism in place that if that happens, there's no funding for SAC. And it wouldn't necessarily be just one year, it could be recurring years. I was extremely impressed with every SAC meeting that I've been attending this year and even this past week. They all have been very good about spending their funds very appropriately and in a, I think, a very good steward manner. The challenge is, in reality, they're supposed to be funding, spending those funds every year, which I'm glad they're not in order for them to have those. But the reason that was done was so that those funds, because they were recurring. Because they haven't been recurring, that's made those SACs be more careful. The SAC funding, and I'm really talking more to the public than I am just out of us, but I think it's important for us to remember, that SAC funding has created some important initiatives in this school district. For example, the first computers were often purchased through SAC funding. Our, our one-to-one initiative started with some of that testing. Some of our things like, you know, what now we think of as eye ready, but it used to be Compass and, you know, and Success Maker, Study Island, all of those came through, they, they became essential tools. They started through initiatives, parent funding initiatives that came out of those SAC funding. So I, I do have concerns that if that SAC funding does go away, it's really impacting the voice of parents, the voice of those stakeholders. And so I think it's just something we need to have on our radar. And again, I think that our SACs are doing an exceptional job at trying to manage that in an unknown situation, but we just need to be aware of that. So that was what I was, wanted to share.
And I want to thank you, because during the legislative date that we were resuming on Friday, you made that perfectly clear to the entire state.
Oh, thank you.
No, otherwise it might have gone unrecognized and you were doing.
It's been, I think, an unintentional consequence. I don't think it was targeted. I think a lot of people have been going, oh, because it didn't, they've forgotten it's gotten tied to it. So hopefully we'll, we'll have some conversations about it.
All I can do is look at your body, check it up for the awards. You do, you would think, so. And you're right, the whole year, so the SACs have got much more power in the school system. And it first started, no one knew it was bigger. Now, the parents are very involved and wants to end it, I think, with bonds, teachers, parents and the stretch altogether.
We depend on them and I, and I said that to, to one of the SACs this week, you know, the district depends on it, it's in state statute, it's in administrative code, it's in our Title I and federal requirements with parent engagement. It's peppered throughout really our operations, but we actually just often use it to have a barometer of what is happening at our schools.
I don't want to respond directly to our comments, we don't typically do that for, you know, comments that come to board. But I did have a question in reference to PE. And with my son being a PE, not wearing a mask, I'm just curious, is that, are some PE teachers requiring masks when you want outside, do we know? Or I thought PE, when they're outside, they didn't have to have a mask on. Do we, is that, I'm just curious if.
I believe if they're actively moving outside, they shouldn't have the mask on.
Okay, I'm just, I mean, I heard.
Because we said that if they're doing any kind of exercise, they shouldn't be wearing the mask. There's not a need to do that.
There's a, in the policy, there's a provision in there that says that, you know, if you're outside, socially distanced and active and all, the mask is not required.
I, I hate to interrupt, but Citrus Springs Middle demands it, that you wear a mask outside.
Run laps with a mask on.
Yes.
Well, I just, I got a child in school too, so I just, I was just curious, but thank you for, thank you very much. Thank you.